Welcome to the pre-council work session. Before we start, or as we start here, I want to know, I'm going to have a couple of comments for councilor concerns, and I'd like to hear if anyone else has them. One of the things that we'll be talking about in our council meeting, or that we have on our consent agenda, I just wanted to touch base on that before I talk about that. But I wanted to mention that we are going to be doing our annual reauthorization of the tax abatements for low-income housing. We have all that detailed information in our packet, and it's on the consent agenda. But I just wanted to call it out because it's another, it's one time of the year where we can recognize, as you read through all of those, how well occupied those housing units are, and what a good service. And I'm glad we have them in our community. We've seen more need for that recently than we ever have, and so I just wanted to mention that I'm glad about that. And I wanted to thank our city staff for their incredible efforts with ideas, follow-through, backup plans, and solutions for the last couple of weeks. Many opportunities for those things, so thank you for all your work. Anyone else have any councilor concerns to bring up, though? That wasn't really a concern. Councilor West?
I don't have a concern, but I do want to say I am still hearing how impressed our community was with the tree stuff and the storm. Still, like, oh, Ben, by the way, can I just say the city was a rock star during this? So like, you guys deserve another week of kudos, because I'm still hearing about it. So it's not really a concern, but we always have time for positive affirmations, right?
Right. Thank you. And I do have one other councilor concern before we start, is for IT. Could you check to see, please, Beth, if we have that share, host sharing on, so that I know if I can see the raised hands?
Yes, you are co-host. I don't know if one of the other councillors would like to raise their hand to see how that functions?
That little, there it is. I see it. It's a little tiny blue hand in the corner. Okay. Great. So we'll move on to the work session, and the first item up on the work session is an update on the city's transportation performance evaluation by development engineering manager Koyle Lee.
All right. Hi. Good evening, council and Mayor Victorio. My name is Koylee, and I'm the development engineering manager for the city of Wilsonville. With me tonight, I have Scott Manster from DKS. He's our city consultant traffic engineer. Tonight, we wanted to bring in front of you the transportation performance evaluation report. Because some of you are new, so just for context, I touched very briefly on the background of the report. Under previous council direction, engineering was tasked to provide an evaluation on our transportation and provide the report every two years. The purpose of the transportation evaluation report was to, first, to make sure that our city's transportation continued to serve at an adequate level of service; second, to keep the city transportation goals; and lastly, to track how well the city planning and engineering efforts lead into the design outcomes. The last report was done in 2016. In 2018, we skipped the report due to some over change of the staff, but the current report was completed November 2020. And with that, I will let Scott Manster to present the result of the report for your information, and we'll take any questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Koyle. I'm Scott Manster with DKS Associates. I'm excited to share the presentation from the City of Wilsonville Performance Monitoring Report. Can you see my screen okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I just wanted to kind of share a little bit about the purpose of the Performance Monitoring Report. Koyle did a great job summarizing kind of the past and what we're, how we got to where we are today. And the purpose of the Performance Monitoring Report has really helped the city monitor its planning and engineering efforts, and just determine that as the city's building infrastructure and planning infrastructure, that it's really leading to the desired outcomes to really meet the needs of the residents and businesses within the city of Wilsonville. Also, to look at incremental progress that is made towards the city's seven transportation goals that were identified as part of the city's transportation system plan, or I'll probably reference it as the city's TSP. And also to track the impacts of regional transportation growth on Wilsonville streets. And one of the big reasons that this performance monitoring was really brought to the forefront was a lot of changes in Sherwood and Washington County and Clackamas County that were really leading to a lot of regional traffic that was impacting city streets, and just wanting a desire to monitor and just see how the traffic volumes were changing and maintaining within the city of Wilsonville, and how the infrastructure was holding up to the future growth. And I wanted to make sure it was clear, too, with the pandemic, there's been a lot of changes to traffic volumes on city of Wilsonville and streets throughout the United States. And I know councillor Akroval had raised an issue, a question, about when the traffic data was collected. And fortunately, community development director Namso approved these traffic counts and a lot of the data collection back in 2019, prior to the pandemic. So all the data that we used in this was collected in 2019, in April and May of 2019, before the pandemic, which was great. One other thing I wanted to raise is that we have been monitoring traffic volumes during the pandemic, and we did see a drop in about 20% to 30% in traffic volumes on both city and freeways throughout the state. And that was kind of in the first few months of the pandemic. Slowly, the traffic volumes have been coming back, and we're seeing traffic volumes around 10% to 15% of a drop right now, and we're just slowly seeing those volumes come back to kind of pre-pandemic levels slowly. So another reason for the performance monitoring and monitoring traffic in Wilsonville is Wilsonville is growing much faster than many areas in the state and in the region. And as you can see from this slide, pretty much from 2004 to 2019, I've seen a significant increase in the Wilsonville population, had a population growth of approximately 2.8%, which is significantly higher than neighboring Washington County, kind of the averages within Washington County and Clackamas County. And so as that growth occurs, we also have to keep up with our transportation infrastructure, and that's one of the things that's important through this process, and one of the keys to this tool in the city's toolbox. Any questions so far? All right. Feel free to interrupt at any time, and I'll keep moving. So these are the seven transportation goals from the city's transportation system plan. The first is safe, so related to transportation safety, connected and accessible, functional and reliable, cost-effective, compatible, robust, and promotes livability. And we created some measures based on the city's transportation goals to determine how is the city's infrastructure kind of delivering traffic and also keeping residents safe and connected within the system. And I'll go through a little bit more about the measures in the following slides. So the first slide is related to safety, and we evaluated the last five years of crash data within the city of Wilsonville, and you can see from the map, these are just mappings of fatal and serious injury crashes within the city, and those are kind of the crashes that we really want to eliminate within the city's street network. We had one fatal crash down by, to the east, near Boons Ferry Primary and Oaks, Graham Oaks Park. And then the rest of the crashes in the city were, the serious injury crashes are the orange dots and the bicycle crash up on Canyon Creek within the city's network. The good news, when we looked at this in our prior Performance Mining Report, the city was seeing about 2.9 fatal and serious injury crashes within the network. And as the city continues to build better infrastructure, better connectivity, better bicycle and pedestrian improvements, we're seeing that crash rate come down even lower than it was in the past. It's dropped from 2.9 crashes per year down to about 2.5 crashes per year. And when we compare that to statewide, statewide average for other similar communities based on population, most communities have an average rate of 5.9 fatal and serious injury crashes per year. So you can just see the city has a very safe network, but I'm not satisfied with 2.5 fatal and serious injury crashes per year. There's still work that can be done to eliminate all serious and injury crashes, very similar to a lot of the desire for Vision Zero network, no crash, no fatal and serious injury crashes on Oregon's roads. I'm sorry. So some of the recommended actions to goal one would be to identify funding from the TSP to improve the multimodal network, and to focus on projects related to safe routes to school, buffered, and protected bike lanes, and enhanced crossings. And I think councillor Akroval, you had a question?
I'm mute myself, sorry. Thank you. I did have a question about this slide in particular, and I wonder if staff could remind us, when we're looking at this map here, and the corner of Beckman Road and Canyon Creek Road have a couple of data points represented, right, with the orange dots, and I wondered if staff could remind us what the plans are for that intersection, specifically since it appears to be highlighted on the map?
So, Koyle, can I, I'll take a cut at that, because that was a question that was raised at Planning Commission, and I actually looked at, so councillor Akroval, just so you know, one of the questions was what types of crashes were occurring? And there's three crashes at that location. Two of them were cars that ran the stop sign. So two of the three, and then the third was related to, there's a little curve just to the south, and a car went off of the road and hit a tree, just to the south in that horizontal curve. But the city has identified a traffic signal at that intersection in the future, but it hasn't been, it probably could have been constructed before now, but the problem is, the city's also identified to fix Beckman Road, that's what we call the Beckman Dip, and there's a structure, a bridge. And unfortunately, that bridge structure will actually come up and be the fourth leg of that intersection. And so we're waiting for that project to get completed, and once that's complete, then we can build the traffic signal to help improve the safety at that intersection.
Okay, so the improvements are really kind of connected to the Beckman Dip Bridge project, then?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for that clarification and kind of reminder of what the plans are for that point in particular.
Yes.
Councillor West? You're muted.
I think that my question kind of goes a little bit hand-in-hand with councillor Akroval's question. I know that this is, I mean, it's, four years is quite a span, but is there any similarities within these data points? Is there any thing, not like, was it, is there a consistent issue, like maybe with drinking and driving in our community? Is it tied to I-5? Is it infrastructure with lights? Is there something that can kind of tie that says like, oh, these are all kind of similar and have, and kind of all tie into this specific issue that we could address to make it better?
Yeah, I'd say there isn't a real clear trend that would say, here's where you want to put your money, but I'd say there was a, there is some combination of some bicycling crashes, also the need for enhanced pedestrian crossings. Throughout the city, we've seen a couple, and the, this data lags a little bit, so this is actually through 2018, but since 2019 and 2020, we've been looking at some of the fatal and serious injury crashes, and we're definitely seeing the need for additional infrastructure for pedestrians and bikes, and protecting those vulnerable users.
And councillor Linville?
Yeah, I'm interested, obviously, in the, in the point that is the intersection of Airport Road and Miley Road, and actually very surprised that there are no data points there at all, given that I personally know of several serious injury accidents that have occurred there, and I just don't know whether that is because the data is lagging. But I thought at least one of those pretty serious injuries was in 2018, so I am surprised. Just wanted to be sure that our reports would include that area?
I'll have to, that's a great question. I'll have to double-check that. I know that is, there have been, there's a frequency of crashes, but I'm trying to recall if that is a Clackamas County intersection, and I need to double-check. But we, if it wasn't, it was likely that, I know there was a high frequency of crashes at that location. I'm just not sure if there was any injury A, which are kind of a severe debilitating injury, and a fatal crash are kind of the ones that we've mapped on this intersection. I'd be happy to look up and provide some more information to you, though, for crash history at that location as well.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, it would be interesting to, or I think for us to know, given our concern about traffic on Airport Road, so.
Councillor Leeham?
Yeah, my question would be similar to councillor Linville's. You know, if we're just looking inside the city, or the other big ones historically are just outside the city on Advance, with that other big dip, where we've killed any number of people there, several people, and some fairly recently, but also the number of accidents at 65th and Elixon Stafford, which is a problem just outside of us. So, you know, I know those aren't our responsibility directly, but it tends to be our residents who die in those crashes. I don't know how many fatals they've had at Elixon, or if they have had, but they've had, just by looking at the grass on the road, I mean, the glass on the roadway, there've been a lot of accidents at 65th and Elixon. So anyway, that would be my, I can't think of any really dangerous spots on our west side until you get way out on, further out on Wilsonville Road towards Newburgh, and then, you know, I hear the ambulance is headed out there from time to time. But that's several miles away, as opposed to the Elixon-65th intersection or the dip at Advance. So it just seems like they should be in our consciousness also.
That's a good point. That's something that we can consider, including those, but the intent from the council was to update this report every two years, and those are some locations that we can make sure to include in our evaluation the next round. Councillor Leeham, we, I know as part of a lot of the Frog Pond concept planning and transportation evaluation, that the 65th intersection was evaluated, both safety and operational evaluation, and I know the city has been coordinating with Clackamas County with some of the concerns and the desires for improvements at that location.
Yeah, more of a county coordination issue.
And I have one question, too. I know it's not part of what your metrics are here, but I do a lot of walking in the city, too, and I wonder if you have, if we have a collection at the city of maybe pedestrians have called or commented about scary intersections, they, you know, there was not a collision, they weren't hit, but they found it to be not a great pedestrian access. Do you have, like, experience reports from people?
Yeah, we received a lot of data as far as feedback from the public on gaps in the network, but not necessarily from a ranking of, you know, scary or issue, you know, kind of what the issues were, but definitely with desires for certain areas that were limiting for needs for the pedestrian and bicycle network.
Okay, thank you.
So the next goal was related to multimodal connectivity, and it's something that was very important to the past council as we went through this process, and the city continues to do a great job of making improvements to the multimodal connectivity. And the objective for this goal was to provide residents with multimodal access to parks, neighborhoods, really the importance of connecting neighborhood to neighborhoods for all modes of travel, if you want to walk, bike, use transit, as well as employment centers, retail areas, and surrounding regions. And so as we looked at, you can see that the city's continuing from this map, continuing to make a lot of great multimodal improvements and connections throughout the city, and you can see some of the bike lanes and sidewalks that were added to the network, you see the multi-use path under I-5. And the exciting thing in the future, there's still a lot of additional planned projects that will continue to improve multimodal connectivity, and one would be the I-5 pedestrian bridge that will connect town center to the west side of I-5, as well as the Fifth to Kinsman Project that's going to connect the old town to Kinsman Road and Wilsonville Road, and to the Tonkin Trail as well. So kind of the recommended actions for multimodal connectivity is to continue funding sidewalk infill, bicycle lane conversions, and other important street connections for all modes of travel. The next goal is related to functional and reliable, so wanting a network that you can rely on as you drive throughout the network, as well as functional, meets the needs for your daily trips, whether you're jumping on your bike, or walking, or biking, or driving your car. And the exciting, as we looked at the city's network, the city continues to meet your Level Service D standard. We evaluated, and that was the objective here, is to continue to maintain acceptable levels of traffic delay within the city, and looking at travel times for all users, including freight. As we looked at the study intersections through this network, all the cities continue to meet Level Service D. You can see some of these intersections slowly increased, but our infrastructure improvements continue to kind of maintain with the added traffic volumes, and even some of these intersections decreased in delay over the time period because of improvements in network connectivity that takes traffic volumes away from intersections and better spreads out the traffic within the city network. Also, some recent collector and arterial extensions like Kinsman Road, Canyon Creek are all great extensions that are now taking pressure off of other network facilities. So our recommended actions for goal three were to continue to upgrade traffic signal controllers. One of the best things that we can do is to use the system that we have, the infrastructure we have, more efficiently, and that, and keeping up with traffic signal timing and synchronization is a real important efficiency, so continuing to provide the funding needed for that, as well as working with Clackamas County to look at busier corridors that might look, might be supported by optimized signal timing and coordination.
Oh, excuse me, we have a question from councillor Linville.
Yes.
I have a question on this particular slide, and it has to do with the objective that we have, and maybe this is not something that you can respond to as much as maybe our own staff, but the PM peak hour, I believe, is somewhere around like 5:00 at night? Is that correct?
Councillor Linville, that is the highest hour of traffic between 4:00 to 6:00 PM is considered the PM peak period.
Okay. So one of the things that I continue to hear from residents is the difficulty of getting, particularly from Vilbois to Wilsonville High School, at the hours when school lets out, and it can take people an hour to get back and forth from Vilbois to Wilsonville High School and back. And I wonder if, obviously, that doesn't, that's outside of the peak hour, but it appears to be an hour of concern, is that time from the time that school lets out until that, until and maybe through that peak hour. So I'm just wondering if there's some way that we might address that, because I think that is of great concern to our, particularly our parents that, and high school students that have to drive that particular area. And then the other thing I just, before I get off, there was a small little area that looked like it was in the center of Charbonneau that had to do with pedestrian. Can you explain what that was?
I believe that was some pathway sidewalk improvements that were conducted, but I don't know if Koyle or anybody else at the city could weigh in to provide more detail. But I believe that's, it was some sidewalk and pathway improvements.
That is correct, Scott. That are the, that is the sidewalk improvement that we pull information from our GAS map to show on this particular slide.
I'd be interested in what that detail was at some point. I don't need to deal with it today, but I know there, there's not very many sidewalks, so I'd like to, I'm interested to find out where that is, so.
Yeah, and you were referring to Charbonneau, correct?
That's correct. It's this, it's this one area that's the gray area, sidewalk infill, and bike lane additions.
Yep. So I'll work with Koyle, and we'll make sure to follow up with some details on that, those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
So the next one is related to cost-effective, goal four, and this really relates to continuing to provide good pavement conditions for the drivers within Wilsonville. And the objective was just that, to make sure we're providing, reducing the costly expenses for future improvements for paving. And as you can see in this table, the city's been doing a great job of keeping up with arterial, I'm sorry, with local street and collector roads, and this PCI is kind of the pavement index of average and good conditions, of the pavement conditions within the city. But you can see that the arterial is just getting right along, kind of going from fair to poor conditions. And as you can see, this was part of the city's citizen results, and you can see from street repair, one of the things that's dropped over the last few years is the desire, or just concern about street repairs and paving conditions. And so our recommendation, recommended action is to reach out to the public and find out what are some of the high priority roadways that they'd like to see improved in the future. And also, as development occurs, also looking to partner with private developments to improve and do maybe full-street improvements to make the improvements more cost-effective as things move forward. I think I saw a hand for a question.
Got a hand, councillor West?
Thank you. Maybe this is too specific. I know that we did some patchwork on Day Road. It was us that did the patchwork on Day Road. We just did some, I think so, it was really, it was, you would need to do tires or front-end alignment just driving through it, but it was pretty bad. And that, I think that's the main arterial, just as you go into Coffee Creek and by Graham's Ferry, just on the edge of the north part of the city. Is that considered an arterial? When you talk about arterials that are like failing or falling apart or becoming less than average, is that, is that like, I mean, I feel like that, a lot of, I'm just saying, that's the one that just came to my mind. I feel like most of our roads are pretty drivable still, but I didn't know if that's on the radar, too.
And councillor West, that's a great, great comment, because there's, this is kind of your average of the condition, so it says, on average, you're on the, for your arterials, and yes, Day Road is an arterial, but it's right, that would mean some of your facilities are below par and in the poor category, and a lot of yours are in the, in the fair to good, and that, that's just the average of your arterial scoring.
So Day's driving down everybody else's score, probably?
It could be, yes, definitely. That would be part of, that's, Day Road and maybe other facilities that maybe are in tougher conditions would be impacting.
Well, Barbara, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. I do have a question, and that is regarding...
I do have a question, and that is regarding the vehicle registration fee that we've been talking about. I believe as the cities were committed, a certain percentage of the revenues, that we were going to use some of that for the Beckman Dip and maybe some of these other streets. If we, so that's kind of our planning for doing that. If we are not able to do that, if that goes away, I just want to point out, we're going to have to find some other method of doing it, and it's not going to be instantaneous. I guess that's just a comment on cost-effective. We're trying to be cost-effective, and we may have to come up with another way.
Didn't Toallerton jump, they kind of passed their own way to raise revenue within the city, the dollars that stay specifically within Toallerton for road maintenance and upkeep? And I'm not sure what they did, but they created a source of revenue that stayed just in city limits for their own road issues.
Yeah, they approved 100 million, I think it was 100 million dollar transportation bond that was just to go to street improvements within the city of Toallerton.
Is that property tax back?
I am not, not sure. I know it went to the voters, but I'm not sure the, how it was funded.
Well, I can follow up with that, questions with our caper project managers, Zach Wygo. He's running our caper project program, including the street maintenance projects every year, so I can follow up with him on that particular question.
So, and Councilor Linville, I was able to look up the Charbonneau information and that, those improvements were related to a 32-unit housing development on Southwest Honor Loop. So that was some sidewalk improvements and infill as part of some development. So, Mayor Fitzpatrick, is it okay if I continue?
Yes.
The next Goal Five was related to cross-section compliance, and just making sure that the city system is compatible with the needs. This really looks at trying to bring existing streets up to current urban standards, and you can see from the pictures, Parkway Avenue just south of Argyle Square is a good example of a street with no bicycle or pedestrian facilities, as well as Brown Road between Wilsonville Road and Villebois, seeing gaps in the sidewalk network. And so the city has been doing a great job continuing to upgrade your streets. Some examples between 2016 and 2020 that have been completed is Two's Road, Graham's Ferry, the new, recent Kinsman Extension, and some streets that are planned for urban upgrades. One is Garden Acres, which is currently under construction, and then some that are on the docket down the road would be Beckman Road, Parkway Avenue and Brown Road. And I'd say there's been a lot of, Council Linville brought up a point related to the Wilsonville High School and some of the congestion related to that. And actually, one of the projects in the TSP was to improve Beckman Road. And the Beckman overpass today is only two lanes, and in the transportation system plan, that was identified to be an arterial five-lane section, and that's one of the projects that was identified in the TSP. And I think that's one of the bottlenecks that can be also a future improvement that's really going to reduce the impacts from delay and congestion related to the high school with having another east-west connection between areas on the west side of Wilsonville to Wilsonville High School. But our recommended actions for cross-section compliance is to continue to identify and fund city TSP projects that were identified for urban upgrades. Two more slides. Goal Six is related to the transportation mode share, and our objective was to accommodate transportation choices for all users, drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, transit users. And overall, kind of what we saw from the National Citizens Report was that 70%, near or above 70% excellent to good rating within the city that they felt that the ease of walking and biking and using transit within the city. And our recommended actions are to continue to work with, support smart and exploring and improving data collection to really determine kind of transportation mode share within Wilsonville and what improvements and what services can really improve the, increase the mode share within the city. And also continue to build those multimodal network connections within the city to give additional options to all users. And then Goal Seven, the positive citizens' response, and this is really the objective that we were trying to achieve, is to maintain positive citizen satisfaction within the city's transportation facilities, and more importantly, related to facilities that support improved health. And the good news is, we saw, you know, the overall citizens felt like that things are improving and that the overall built environment and the general perception of personal health of being able to walk and bike within the city were in the excellent to good category. So just continue to, you know, guide funding, to identify projects that matter to citizens, and also those that, you know, promote walking and biking within the city. And some social media, you know, the city's done a lot of great, opened a lot of great pedestrian and bicycle facilities and just really using social media to really get the word out, to really publicize and make aware of improvements and connections that are being made throughout the city. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, it looks like we asked a number during the presentation, so we'll look forward to seeing your follow-up material if there's any more to give us. I think we have a little bit more. Thank you very much. And before we go into the next one, I just wanted to say that I don't think I finished my opening question at the beginning of work session. I just wanted to repeat that, wanted to find out if anybody has any questions on consent or order of agenda. We are good, okay. So, thank you for that report, and our next report is Zoe Monahan with the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee bylaws introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Zoe Monahan. I am the Assistant to the City Manager for the city. And this evening, I am seeking your input on the draft charter for our new Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, or DEI, committee. This is the committee that the city council had requested that we look into in January of 2021. I would like to start this conversation off by saying that these are definitely a draft. We are seeking your input. We will be seeking input from the community groups that we had been meeting with previously to ensure that we're getting community feedback on the bylaws. And I also look forward to taking any of your questions this evening. So to get started, I'd briefly like to walk you through the bylaws. I'm going to pull them up on my screen. Can you see them?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I just want to briefly walk you through the bylaws and answer any questions you might have. So they're pretty standard in that it has the name of the committee, the purpose. Here, we're looking to outline what the committee is going to do. So they are outlined as an advisory committee on policy decisions, making recommendations on how we engage on these strategies. They will also be looking at how we are responsive to our service delivery, our programming and communication strategies within the city. This also identifies that they will create a plan as well as oversee the process of that plan. We intended for this to be broad, to allow for us to scope what this committee will do and their work as we go. The committee will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, consistent with our other committees. Membership will be made up of approximately nine to 11 members. We wanted to allow flexibility. This is something that can be modified, just like the rest of the bylaws if you choose, but that is the intent, to provide flexibility and also provide a number of people to participate if they would like. The residency requirement is flexible. We're looking to ensure that we have people that are committed to this work, as well as bringing value to the committee. So most people must live within the city, but we also include an option for business owners, for those that may not live in the city but do bring additional value to the committee. You'll also note that we have attending schools within the committee. Later, in Section Four, Four F, we outline that a student representative will be identified for this committee as well, to meet your goal, your current city council goal of engaging The appointment section walks through that we are looking to really include a diverse group of individuals within this committee. So we have specifically outlined the BIPOC community, the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as those who have experienced disabilities. This isn't to say that others shouldn't be included, but we couldn't list every group, and we didn't want to exclude any group. So you'll note in the bottom line that it also notes that members, appointed members will be expected to think broadly in terms of how issues of racism, sexism, ableism, and other discriminatory and prejudicial bias impact all residents in Wilsonville. So we want this to be broad as well. The terms outline that they will be for three years. There are a few places that we're still cleaning up the language, but it is intended for three This set of bylaws does allow for a committee member to be removed if they're not participating or not participating in an effective manner. You'll note here that we also have the youth member. This is for two years, and the intent there is that the students have other responsibilities of school and may not be able to commit as much time. If they were a youth member and then graduated and wanted to continue to serve as an adult member, they could continue their appointment, just not in that youth capacity. And that new term would be for three years as an adult member. We've also specifically outlined that the youth member would be voting. So all nine to 11 members on this board are voting members. The terms are outlined, and this should be three to four years. So they're staggered, that we would have three to four individuals for the three-year appointments. And this is just for our initial appointment, to ensure that they aren't all up for reappointment at the exact same time. These dates will also need to be updated based on our first term, so this will likely be June instead of April. This section organization is also very standard. It outlines that there will be a chair that runs a meeting and a vice chair to fill in, that they will have either a staff or consultant to provide their administrative support. It also notes that they'll make a minimum of four times a year. This is just to ensure that they are meeting regularly and completing their tasks, which is also consistent with the tourism committee. They also have a requirement of a minimum of four years. It also notes that they can hold a meeting. They can discuss things, however, they cannot vote without quorum. We've specifically outlined that folks can participate via Zoom or telephone. They must follow public meeting laws and Robert's Rules, which is standard with our other committees. We've outlined here that voting is for all members at the meeting, however, proxies are not allowed. Finally, the amendments can be made to these bylaws. The one last thing that I want to note, back in the section regarding appointment, this section is unique, and we want to make sure that we encourage unique perspectives for those in our community. And as I noted, we just couldn't include all groups. So that's why there are specific groups identified, but not everyone. I would be happy to take your feedback and any questions you may have. We'll take this to our committee groups that we've been working with, get their input and bring it all back to you later in the spring.
Thank you, Council Linville. Thank you, Zoe. I have a question on page two, Item D, which is the terms. And I'm just a little confused because it says that the committee terms are for three years, but it says all members may serve two consecutive four-year terms. So is it three years or four-year terms?
That's an excellent question. It is three years, as proposed. This is something that we went back and forth on as staff, and this was one area that it was missed in our cleanup before it came to you. So the intent is currently three years, and that is a typo.
Oh, okay. So it would read all members may serve two consecutive three-year terms? Is that, that's how it'll be?
That's correct. So as your section reads now, it would be up to six years on and four years off in between.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council West.
Thank you. My question is under Section F of page, I'm looking actually in the packet, 223139. So that's the F port, yeah, that's it, yeah. Council appointing a Wilsonville High School student to serve a two-year term on the committee. Youth member will be a voting member, so high school members generally have, some have three years, some have, most have four years, excuse me. But I'm kind of wondering, your thought process for the two years? I think that civic engagement would be really cool, if the more students could have the opportunity. Is it something that makes sense? I would love to know your guys' thinking on it, that it went years, it was like one year and then they could choose to go on to another year, or it was one year and then another student can have an opportunity to maybe join, you know, a city board or commission like this, and so, or committee? And so, I don't, I was just curious about the thinking and if it's the best way to get the most students the most exposure to civic engagement, I guess is my question.
Can I ask, are you asking if it would be, if you would change that to a one-year term? Is that what you're asking?
So one-year term, and then the student can always opt in or out for the following year, but maybe if it's one-year term, then that, another student could jump in and have an opportunity, gives maybe more opportunity for more students? Is my only thinking about making it maybe a max of two years, so make it an option, maybe? I don't know, making it an option or making it somehow, expanding it a little bit just for a few more stu, maybe two students, maybe? Or, I'm just trying to get more, I think, I like the idea of more high schoolers involved in the process.
Well, I have some feedback to that, because I have another committee that, separate from the city, organization that started a youth membership like this. And it, my observation was, because they, you know, when you're, when you're that age, you probably haven't done this before, and it took some time for some of them to get used to it. And so if it was over after two meetings, I mean, after four meetings, they might have kind of gotten the hang of it and ready to be vocal and participate toward the end, and then it's over. And so I thought, I was thinking two years was good for that reason, because you'd know that you'd have some time to get used to it, and then go back and talk to your peers and get some other ideas and come back. So I don't know. I thought two years sounded good.
What do people think about putting two members from the high school, up to two members, or just giving a little more opportunity than just one? I'm just throwing it out there.
Maybe we put it down as one of our ideas.
Yes, I can note that, and I would also add that we wanted to ensure that there was an opportunity for youth participation. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of interest from our youth. However, it's also sometimes challenging to get them to participate. We also allow for a youth position on the Citizens Academy, and often struggle, or at least over the past few years, have struggled to find a younger individual who wants to be on the committee. And the intent for the two-year term was to allow some consistency and not have as long of a term. But I will note, one year. But I will note one year, max of two years for additional discussion.
Oh, Council Opera.
I have another idea, kind of in that topic too, that I would be curious what staff thinks about, and of course, what our community group, you know, that's been working with this also thinks about. And I also, you know, really would like to encourage youth involvement in this. I also am aware that sometimes, you know, those spaces don't always get filled too, right? In, in different committees, staff from, from youth participants. I wondered if a strategy might be to have two spots, two-year terms, and stagger those so that, you know, maybe it works out that there's a senior and a junior or some, you know? And then as the junior moves up to the senior position, they may even be able to help recruit for that second person. And it might help bring some of the student involvement into recruiting position, you know, people to help fill these positions if it was staggered. And it might also give students more of a feeling of support when there's two on the committee together, where they can kind of learn from each other and be able to support each other in that dynamic and within that group. So, it was just one thought. I don't know if other boards or committees maybe have found something successful along those lines where they've had, you know, two youth members serving together and staggering and kind of including those youth members in the recruitment process themselves too. But it was, it was just one thought I had. And I also wanted to clarify that the text says Wilsonville High School. High school is not capitalized. And I assume that's because we're talking about Wilsonville High School, but also Arts Tech. And I want to make sure that they're included in, you know, any outreach and advertisement of, of these roles too, because of course, they're an important part of our, our community as well.
Yes, and the intent behind that is to open it up to any high school student that is in Wilsonville. We didn't want to specifically say you had to be a student at Wilsonville High School since some, as you noted, did not attend that school.
Excellent, okay.
And then on, of course.
Correct, yeah.
And on your note of the, the two spots for two years, I've noted these things, and we'll take them back and get some more feedback and look at other committees to bring that back to you in April for additional discussion.
Sure, thank you.
Were there any other thoughts or feedback?
It looks like we've covered it, Zo, and we, we will, oh, we have two more. Council Linville.
Sorry. I'm sorry too. I know that when we had, last had this discussion, there was a little, I asked the question of our consultant about whether a liaison from the city council would be appropriate. And I just, I guess this is more of a question to the council. If we decided that we wanted to do that, would it be part of the bylaws? Or would it just function as an appointment to a committee, much like we do our other committees? I know that like in the Metro Community Enhancement, it specifies council membership, but I don't know, I haven't looked at the bylaws for other committees that might have liaisons. So, that would be my only other question to the council about, do we want to have a liaison from the city council, and would it go in the bylaws or not?
I, I remember, tell me if you think I'm remembering this correctly, Zo, but it seems like Bill de la Cruz, where we had a discussion about that it would be a liaison as in going, I think this is something we have to discuss, but I don't think it, this, this set of bylaws to me doesn't show that a city council member is a voting member. It doesn't call them out to be an ex officio member, as we've seen in some other bylaws. But it might be more, I picked it up, that it was more like the way we used to do liaisons to the committees. Years ago, we had somebody who was assigned, you're the liaison to the DRB committee. You're just going to the meetings and, and being a liaison, but you weren't necessarily representing the council views or driving the direction of it in any way. That's, and I think that would be, I just, I, I don't see that a counselor has a direct role in, in being a voter on the way that this is worded. Does anybody else have thoughts about that?
No, and I, I think Bill was very clear that it was, it was not, not his experience that, that the council person would be, even though it was usual to have a council person, it was not usual that they would be a voting member.
So, if we want to have a liaison, Zo, could, could you talk, you know, kind of come up with a way of how that would work and how we would, where we would, where would we would record that?
Yes, I think that you would put that likely, and I'll confirm with, with our city attorney, but I believe that would be in the membership section. And then you would note, similar to the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee or Tourism Committee, that there is a, an either ex officio or a voting member of council. The way the current bylaws are drafted, that is not included. However, the members of the committee would be in an advisory capacity. So, either the chair or the staff person could provide that input back to council or via a letter, something like that. So, there would still be an avenue for the committee to report to the council. These bylaws just only note that there would be the advisory or recommendation ability of this committee. But yes, I will, to answer that, yes, I will note that for continued discussion and where that would go.
Does that answer your question, Council Linville?
Well, I, yeah, yes. I, I guess part of that question was really asking all of my fellow counselors whether they feel that that is something we should do or should not do. So, I would really be interested in hearing that or having maybe that discussion at some point. We, we have plenty of time, I think, to deal with it.
Before I go to Council West with probably a different question, just so we can wrap this up, does, does anybody have anything to add to this for now? I think it would be good to, does somebody raise their hand?
Yeah, okay.
Council.
Since I am the non-voting ex officio member on the Tourism Committee, I have some background in this. But Tourism also has several other non-voting ex officio members also from Clarkland County Tourism, from Washington County Tourism, and, you know, other staff people who are not actually voting members, but participate in the discussion. So, that's not, it's not unusual in a, in a body like that to have ex officio members who, who participate in the discussion and don't vote. And, and there might be others besides city council, you know, perhaps a staff person from the school district, for instance, or some, someone else who might have an interest as an ex officio.
Okay, Council Opera, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I would be curious to hear what the community group that's been working with us, what their feedback and thoughts are as far as having a council member as, you know, as a liaison-type role, and, and what their feelings are on that, and what they think would be most beneficial for their discussions and their, their work too, so.
Okay, thank you. If, if that, if that's good for the notes, are you trying to, Manager Cosgrove, are you wanting to speak?
I was just gonna note that we, we have two committees that have quote-unquote "council" positions called out in their bylaws. And the thing that both of those have in common is that there's a fiduciary aspect to them. So, the Tourism Promotion Committee awards, makes recommendations on grant awards, as does the Metro Enhancement Committee. So, that's the distinction I think you'll just want to be aware of. The other thing that we did talk about internally is that anytime you have an elected official as part of a kind of committee process, it changes the dynamics of those discussions. So, that's just something that you'll also want to be aware of as, as well. It's not necessarily good or bad. It just, it changes, and it kind of puts the elected official in a spot of, what is my role here? Am I reporting back to council, or am I part of the committee? So, it just, it's just something you need to be aware of. We don't have to, you know, solve it tonight, but those things you need to just be aware of.
And I was just gonna add one more comment to that too, because I did, I did, I was on the city council when we had this practice where you were the liaison to the committee. And there was something about it that was, that was awkward because the committee is asked to make their decisions and give their recommendations. And it's, they don't need to ask, you know, that one person who's sitting in the room from the council if they're doing okay or something. We want them to do the thing and give us their vote. And then we, we have that information, we operate from there. And so, it may be that, I, I have a thought that not, that, that we might get the best, most thoughtful advice from this committee if we're, if we're not involved until they finish their deliberations, you know? They have the packaged-up opinion, and we get it. And then we just, you know, that's, I'm just thinking that the more, the more, there, there may be a role for liaison there that, that we find we need. I'm not sure exactly what it is. So, Council West, you've been having your hand up, and I, I'm calling on you finally.
No problem. This will be quick. I was just reading on page two, and then part C, the appointments. And then Zo, you spoke to this already, and you just cannot list everything as you can. But when I read this, it says, "The city council strives to appoint members of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee who bring their lived experience as..." Should we, just to make sure that everybody knows that they're welcome to apply, should we change that to "such as but not limited to"? Or something like that? Or say, everyone's welcome to apply, and, you know, we're reaching out also to these people as it's listed here? But is there a way to make that even more inclusive by addressing, I guess, the situation that you brought up, that not everybody can necessarily be listed, but we can maybe tweak the language a little bit to make it sound a little bit more inclusive to everybody, regardless of if they fit this identity or not?
Yes, we can work on continued wordsmithing to ensure that it's clear and add-on to this section. We can update this, but also increase the hopefully understanding that we're trying to be inclusive by adding to this paragraph, even though the last, or last sentence does include that we are trying to make this broad. But yes, we will work on that language to make sure it's clearer.
I think that's a good point, okay. Anything else? Great, this has been a great discussion. Thank you, Zo.
Thank you.
And now, we'll move to hearing from our engineering manager, Zach Weigle, on the Fifth to Kinsman Road Extension Project.
Just one second, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and Council. My name is Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager. And it's my pleasure to bring you a resolution tonight on the consent agenda for the award of a construction contract for the Fifth Street to Kinsman Road Extension Project. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that this is a really big deal. There has been a lot of work over many years to get this project to this point, and a lot of work by staff, by a lot of the volunteers on our boards and commissions, city council, both past and present, and most importantly, all of the citizen input and work that has gone into this project. Mr. Cosgrove was kind enough to let me know that not everybody is in the, in the weeds or in the, in the middle of this project every day. So, it'd be good to provide a brief summary about this project, because it's not on the top of mind of everyone. So, tonight I give you a, a kind of quick summary about the scope of this project. I'll highlight some key design elements, provide a summary of the, the project bid that we just went through, and then highlight some of the key construction milestones coming up. So, this is a map of the project. You can see to the, on the south end of the project, Fifth Street is being extended to the west of Boons Ferry Road, and then Kinsman Road is being extended south of Wilsonville Road. And there'll be a new intersection at Fifth and Kinsman Streets. This is a key addition to our transportation network. As you heard from Scott Manzer and Coyle earlier tonight, you know, having alternative routes in our transportation network is, is important to managing congestion, and this project is a perfect example of that. It provides another outlet for the Old Town neighborhood. Currently, they, their only access in any other neighborhood is through that busy Wilsonville Road and Boons Ferry Road intersection. So, this will provide an alternative to that and help manage congestion at that intersection. Also, the, we're, on the south end, south side of the project, you can see we're going to be building a pretty long segment of H. Tonklin Trail, so extending that bike and pedestrian connectivity. There'll be a complete trail section from Boons Ferry Road all the way through Graham Oaks, through Velbois, and connecting to the Toffee Creek Wetland area. So, a nice amenity for the community. And then also, a key component of this project is that we'll be extending infrastructure like water and sewer, and having the road network in place to support future development of this Arrowhead Creek area in South Wilsonville. So, oops, jumped ahead there. So, a few of the key design elements, I thought I'd start on Boons Ferry Road and off to the right of this image. And we'll be installing some sidewalks along that road between Bailey Street and Fifth Street, so adding to the pedestrian safety to the project. And then, one of the key elements that was important to the Old Town neighborhood was to provide traffic calming and pedestrian-oriented design at that Fifth Street and Boons Ferry Road intersection, so right in this area. So, that's gonna be a raised intersection with specific crosswalk enhancements to make that more pedestrian-friendly and to help slow traffic through there. It'd also be converted to a four-way stop-controlled intersection. Then moving to the west along Fifth Street, we'll have a new railroad crossing at the Portland Western Railroad. And that is gonna include some safety improvements to create a quiet zone. So, trains won't have to blow their horns as they go through that intersection anymore, and that'll be a real benefit to the, to the surrounding neighbor, neighbors. Moving further to the west along Fifth Street in this area, we'll be Moving further to the west along Fifth Street, in this area, we'll be building a raised boardwalk. There's a little bit of a storm drainage ravine that goes through there and that boardwalk will be raised over that. And then it will help protect a significant white oak tree that is located in that area. And I did check today, I drove down there and that tree is in still good condition. So it was able to survive the storm. The next, moving west, further west, right in this area, we have a, a new bridge over Coffee Lake Creek. So Fifth Street will have a bridge over the creek. And then moving further west, we have a new intersection between Fifth Street and Kinsman Road. And to the south will be the access for Wilsonville Concrete. And that will also be four-way inner stop controlled intersection. And then you can see here, Arrowhead Creek Lane gets reconfigured and connected to Fifth Street and that will be a future extension of Fifth Street that will eventually connect up to Brown Road. So moving for, north on the new Kinsman alignment, that street is going to replace what's the existing industrial way. Coming up all the way to the north, there'll be another bridge over Coffee Lake Creek on Kinsman Road. And then finally, I just wanted to point out that the ORPAC driveway access, they currently have a private bridge that crosses Coffee Lake Creek and connects to industrial way. And we'll be constructing them a new driveway, removing that old bridge and they'll have direct access on the Kinsman Road. Those are a few of the design details for the project. I included this rendering, this is from the Fifth Street Bridge. Off to the, on the left side of the photo, you can see a rendering of the Ice Tonkin Trail. And then on the, and there'll be a two-lane road on that section. And then the bike lane is going to be protected from traffic and on, on the right side of the road with a sidewalk adjacent. So the bike lane will actually be a dark gray colored concrete and then the sidewalk will be a regular white concrete. So the spaces will be denoted. So we had the bid opening on February 2nd. We had eight bids from qualified contractors and we were really happy with the results. That's a good number of contractors bidding on this project. It's good to see those four, those top low bids, the four, are really grouped together and within, really close to the engineer's estimate. And best of all, it's within our budget, so really good to see that. So we're recommending award to the low bid to more excavation tonight. And I just wanted to note that Portland Western will be making the improvements to their railroad crossing and we will be coming back to council at a later date to approve that So as far as construction schedule, the contractor will be developing a very detailed construction schedule after they receive notice of award. And, but just in talking with them and coordinating, they are planning on starting work around the first week of April. And the construction period is two years. And many of the businesses and residents in that area only have one access in and out of their property. For example, Wilsonville Concrete and ORPAC and the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant, they all access off of industrial way. So there is a very detailed staging plan that we have put together for this project to make sure they have access during the entire portion of the work. So to complete that, there's this, we know when some of the work will happen and I thought I'd share that with you. So in you, this first year of construction, they're going to focus on utility installation, the new Coffee Creek Bridge at Fifth Street and then constructing Kinsman Road. And then the second year, they'll complete the Kinsman Road Bridge, they'll reconfigure the Arrowhead Creek Lane and build the railroad across Fifth Street. And it'll be, really be up to the contractor to determine when that Boons Ferry Road and Fifth Street work happens. So we're expecting the, the construction work to be completed in January of 2023. And with that, I'll, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You're muted, Mayor.
I don't see any hands raised. Am I missing any? All right, thank you, Mr. Weigle.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our work session. And so I will adjourn the work session at 6:30 PM and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Right?
Yes, ma'am. And same link, so alls you gotta do is unshare your camera and mute your microphone and we'll see you back here in 29 minutes.